Alderman Santee. Alderman Santee. Can you guys hear me? Alderman Santee. Oh, okay. Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman McClatchy?
Here.
Alderman Harding? Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Jeff?
Here. If you could, please enter the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic. All right, this is the opportunity for public comment. This is for public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, this is your opportunity. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for public record. All right, has seen none. Moving on to consent agenda. Is there any council members wanting to pull any items for separate consideration? See none. I am looking for a motion in a second for five A through five I. Alderman Santee. Your screen just went off. There we go.
Sorry about that. I will make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Schratt?
I'll make the second.
Thank you. Discussion by council on these items. See none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Harding? Was he not there?
We lost him for a second.
Okay. Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Before we get going, let's see if we can get Harding back online here. And we'll go ahead and move on to the action items and hopefully he's back on for the vote. So six A. There he is. Alderman Harding? Want to go ahead and give your vote on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. All right, moving on, six A. The action item, motion to approve a video gaming license for the hub market located at 1210 North Green Street, subject to the execution of video gaming development agreement. Deputy City Clerk, Monte Johnson, will go ahead and present this item.
Sure, Hub Market has had a Class A license since 2018. They've never had video gaming before. If they get approved, they'd have to complete a video gaming agreement with the city administrator. And I think Amanda was going to be online to answer questions, but I haven't seen her come in yet. But that's all I've got.
I'm here.
Questions. Oh, sorry, Amanda.
Yeah, Mandy's here. So, all right, so we'll go ahead and have public comment. Is there any public comment regarding this item? See none. I'm looking for a motion in second for six A as presented. Alderman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve video gaming license for the Hub Market located at 1210 North Green Street, subject to the execution of a video gaming development agreement.
You say second? Alderman Schratt?
Make second.
Thank you. Discussion by council on this item. Alderman Santee?
Just a note to thank Monte for attaching the LLC list of, as part of an agenda item for this. That is it.
Thank you. Any other? Alderman and Glad, go ahead.
I just wanted to state the fact that I voted yes on the liquor license several years ago. However, I'd like Attorney McArdle's view on that as far as the fact that it is your wife that is part of owner of the, and according to state law, your funds are commingled and therefore you do have interest into the Hub Market. And I'm concerned about the liquor license as well as the video gaming. And I am definitely not in support of video gaming in a meat market.
All right, David?
Did he say my wife has an interest?
My wife.
I was thinking, wow, that'd be a good thing. You know, she has an interest in the Hub Market. This is, so there's a video. Tell me what the development agreement is again, Ross or Monte?
Sure, it's not a development agreement. So the Hub Market already has a liquor license. So they just applied for video gaming now. So as far as the state is concerned, you know, if somebody is eligible for liquor, they're eligible for video gaming as long as the municipality approves. So it's just for a video gaming license.
Right, but it says a video gaming development agreement. What's that all about?
Yeah, so, but, sorry Derek, go ahead Derek.
Now, so just, this is a reminder, David, all the, all of the entities that have video gaming, we have a development agreement with them that covers three items. It has to do with partitioning, signage, and video.
Oh, right, but there's no money being exchanged.
Right.
No, I don't see any problem with this whatsoever because they're spouses. It, the, the law that Andy's referring to is the interest in contracts. Elected officials are prohibited from having a prohibited interest, a financial interest, direct or indirect, in any contract that the village enters in, the city enters into. This is not a money-bearing agreement.
It is when you tie it to the liquor license.
There's, that's not an agreement. There is no agreement here.
Well, it's, as far as state's acting states.
An agreement would be a sales tax sharing agreement, something financial that he has an indirect or direct interest in, and there's a spousal exception there. So, no, there's no agreement. That's the bottom line. No financial agreement.
We're away from the point that I'm making in the first place, but that's fine. I think I made my point. Thank you.
Any other discussion by council on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Moving on to agenda six B, is a motion to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2122 Hotel Motel Tax Fund in the amount of $22,022.38 to fund the city's portion of East Gateway entrance sign. Economic Development, Doug Martin, you want to go ahead and present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to, excuse me, request to amend the budget for, to pay for the city's portion of the Eastern Gateway sign, as was proposed in the Thornton's City of McHenry Development Agreement, where Thornton's is installing the sign and, and funding the $20,000, the first $20,000, and then any costs above that would be the city's responsibility. And this is what this agenda item is about, the signs in your packet. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there any public comment regarding this item? If so, please unmute yourself. See none. I am looking for a motion in a second on this item. Six B as presented. Alderman Santee? No.
I'll make that motion. I'm sorry, that's very, it's a new surface pro and I'm still figuring it out. Anyway, I will make that motion as presented and a comment once we're done with the motion.
It'd be a second after Frank.
And Alderman McClatchy, for a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Just, discussion by council. Alderman Santee, go ahead.
No, I just wanted, you know, looking at it, the design work and everything. I like the aesthetics of this. Do we have this, I mean, is the plan to possibly look at doing this on all, if possible, in the future entryways into the city?
Yes, that is, yeah, that is the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions by council? Alderman Miller?
Um, first of all, I love it. I think it's beautiful and I'm still shocked at the cost, but I don't see any electrical. Are we having any illumination on the sign or is it just freestanding, no lights?
There'd be electrical run to the sign. There's a separate, yes.
There is, there is electrical. Is there illumination? I don't see any lights.
Um.
The illumination will be from the ground up, like just uplighting on the sign itself as opposed to integrated lighting.
It's not a backlit or anything. It's not on the sign.
Yeah.
I didn't see spotlights anywhere in the specs. Okay. Did I miss that?
It was, yeah. Yeah, the electrical enabled us to do that in-house.
Perfect. Okay, that was my only question.
We were trying to save a little bit of costs from what they're charging us to build this.
I, yeah, I was, I was sort of shocked that it was like $50,000 plus $1,000, but it is what it is. And I'm just glad that we're sharing that cost and not bearing the burden of that whole cost. So, perfect. Just, I wanted to make sure it was lit up because when you come around that corner, even though there will be a lot of lighting there with Thornton's, I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of spotlighted. I'm glad to hear we have lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by council? See none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Moving on to six C, is a motion to enter into a commercial tenant grant agreement with the owners of B&amp;B Auto in the amount not to exceed 15,000. Director Martin, you will go ahead and present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Jeff. B&amp;B Auto is existing business at 913 North Front Street. They submitted for $15,000 commercial tenant incentive grant. They're doing substantial improvements to their exterior facade for their building. For this, there is a elevation included as part of your packet. And they've, they've done actually a lot of improvements to the area over there. And also Phil Baggio is on the call, if you have any questions of, of, of him.
Thank you, Doug. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open it for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that I'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. I am looking for a motion in a second by council. Alderman Santee?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item six C, commercial tenant incentive grant, application for B&amp;B Auto located at three, excuse me, 913 Front Street as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Miller?
I'll make that second.
Thank you. Council discussion? Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, since Phil's, you know, invested over there the last 15, 16 years, I believe. It's just the aesthetics and what he's done with those buildings and actually what he's done with residency that he's planning on doing in the very near future. He, he's just, look, he's just made a really, really nice, attractive area of the, of, of the commercial portion of Front Street. And I'm happy that we have him as a business owner and investor in the city. Thank you.
Any other council comments? See none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Thank you, council. And by the way, Phil, I second what Santee said. So appreciate your investment every, every time you put more money on Front Street. So appreciate that.
Thank you, city council.
All right, moving on to the next item is six D, is a motion to approve a facade improvement grant with the owner. I just did that one.
No, this is.
Oh, there's two. Yep, no, but, I'm sorry.
I blew that. That should have been done together. Sorry.
Yep, that's my bad. Motion to approve a facade improvement grant with the owners of B&amp;B Auto in an amount not to exceed 3,500. I'm looking for public comment regarding this item. Is there any public comment regarding this item of six D? See none. I'm looking for a motion in a second by council. Alderman Santee for motion?
I will make the motion for six D as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Harding?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is six E, is a motion to approve four ordinances, six E one, six E two, six E three, and six E four, related to the Continental Properties Authentics McHenry Integrated Design District Development. Cody, want to go ahead and present this item?
Yeah, sure. Just a really quick overview that I'll take, give it over to Ben and his associates. The petitioner is Continental Properties. They have a contract to purchase Lot One as a proposed subdivision of Authentics McHenry. They are requesting a zoning map amendment, conditional use permit for a planned 288-unit multifamily integrated design district development, variations for simultaneous review of preliminary and final plan of subdivision and plan, temporary signage and minimum floor area, a backup special service area for the long-term maintenance of the proposed regional detention facility on the north side of Lot One, and a development agreement that includes impact D waiver requests for a portion of the parks fees, the city water and sanitary sewer impact fees. The petition went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 19th, 2021, who recommended approval subject to several conditions outlined in the attached ordinances. The petitions are present here tonight, and I'll just turn it over to Ben and his associates.
Go ahead, Ben.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to introduce Matt Goodsite and Joe Gattamaller, who I also have on the line with me. Matt Goodsite is with V3 Engineering, our engineering firm on this project. And Joe Gattamaller is our line used attorney, helping us out on this deal. I'd also like to thank Cody and Ross for all their hard work in helping us get to this point. I know that they spent a long, a lot of long hours helping us out here. So without further ado, can everybody see my screen all right? All right. So as Cody outlined for us, we are here to request a zoning variance to allow the preliminary and final approval of our plat and the integrated design district, including a few variations or items of relief, including a parking quantity reduction, minor signer, signage amendment, as well as unit size relief, as well as the associated development agreement on this project. Just a brief overview of the location. We feel that this is a very great location for this development for a multitude of reasons. First being it's, you know, close proximity to Highway 31 and all that it has to offer, being a major arterial. It really is a really great convenient way to get our residents in and out of the development and to where they're going quickly and safely. The second being just the overall multifamily fundamentals in the area. Staff had a study completed by Tracy Cross and Associates that showed that McHenry really has a very low vacancy rate in their rental housing segment. This development here, in this specific location, would not only help to add a bit more supply, or supply to the area to meet the demand, but also provide more rooftops and heads for these businesses adjacent to it, while acting as a classic definition of the transitional use between commercial, multifamily, leading finally into single family. Again, quick overview, the site is currently zoned C5 and is vacant, being farmed. C5 does not permit any residential on the site, either by right or conditionally. The proposal, as we're planning it currently, abides by the comprehensive plan that we, as we've determined through conversations with staff, we're proposing a clubhouse off to the west here, where the commercial is set to be planned, and we are concentrating the residential development over this yellow area planned as general residential. Moving into the site plan here, so you look somewhat familiar to what we had presented to you in our concept hearing back in February, but I'd like to outline a couple of significant changes that we've made in working with staff. First being the removal of any connection here at Almond Lane. If you recall, that was initially planned as a potential through traffic route, and then it was restricted to an emergency only. And now we've determined with staff that it's best to just block that entirely to negate any negative effects towards this neighborhood. We've also further detailed out this landscaping buffer on the eastern edge here, which we have a few renderings and exhibits to further detail for you. We also relocated the pet park from over the pond to tucked between the clubhouse and building one here in hopes that it would further buffer the noise and any barking that might occur there. And lastly, it, it's a bit hard to tell, but we did soften the curve of the entry drive to make it more accessible to residents coming in and out, as well as emergency services should they need access. One note I do want to start to point out is our first variance we're requesting here in parking. We're currently planning for 546 parking spaces, which is equivalent to 1.9 per dwelling unit. Now, ordinance would require 608 currently, which equates to about 2.1 spaces per dwelling unit. In comparison to our other communities in the Midwest here, you can see that a 1.9 ratio really falls in line with what we find to be successful in our communities. In fact, the highest that we have in the area is a 1.99, so we're not even breaking that 2.0 mark in any of our communities. Staff also did put together this analysis of the city of McHenry's parking requirements versus adjacent communities. I just wanted to pop this up here for a quick reference, and we can come back to that in more detail if needed. But generally, it just illustrates that the current ordinance requires a much higher parking requirement than other adjacent municipalities would require. The main basis for the reduction that we're requesting is really to limit the amount of pervious improvements or impervious improvements that would be required on the site and allow opportunity for more green space, more landscaping on the site. Moving back into that buffering and screening area, we put together this quick exhibit, or this exhibit for the planning and zoning hearing, and we've updated it with a, with a update per planning and zoning and staff's recommendation for a condition of approval. We did add a six-foot privacy fence here. And really what we're trying to illustrate here is that we are trying very hard to go above and beyond what would be required in a base zoning district as a function of the IDD district. Some of the flexibility and design of clustering the buildings on the site and reducing that parking allow us to add this large buffer between the property line and our permanent improvements, which we've landscaped out fairly heavily. As you can see here, this is the exhibit we threw together showing we've, we're providing a, we're planning to provide a mixture of both evergreen and deciduous trees along with that six-foot privacy fence to try to create a full screening effect. Sort of, you know, from the ground level all the way up to the top of those deciduous trees. Here you'll see a rendering, sort of from the perspective of one of the neighboring backyards. This is what the landscaping will look like at the time of install. And then here's what the landscaping should look like at about five years of growth. And then the same view from a different perspective. One of the conditions of approval recommended by staff in both Planning and Zoning Commission was a secondary point of access for emergency services. We are working diligently on finding a solution to this. Our first and preferred route would be a permanent asphalt emergency connection to the commercial lot to the west here. We're working with them to obtain easements. We've been in contact with them over the last week. But we also have a backup in case that those communications would not be fruitful. There is an opportunity to provide a temporary access route along the south here, which would then be demolished and replaced at the time of development of Lot Two. Another one of the variances we are requesting today is a variance to the signage ordinance. Generally, our sign does, our signage, our monument sign, which would be provided at the community entrance here, complies with ordinances. However, this text reading here says by Continental Properties would be a minor variance. And just illustrating for you what the signage at our commercial clubhouse would look like. All this, both of these signs would be, you know, just vinyl lettered with a halo lit back, or halo backlighting, so there'd be no uplighting or harsh lighting projecting from these signs. And then lastly, as Cody alluded to, we're requesting a variance to allow two temporary marketing signs during construction of the project. They'd be pretty plain and simple, as you can see here, and we're just requesting to provide those along one of the frontages or two of the frontages at Blake Boulevard. Moving into the architecture. At the front of the community, as, as noted, we are, we're providing a clubhouse. There are a number of amenities attached to this clubhouse, but we wanted to start to outline some of the changes we made since the concept hearing. As you see up top here, we have made significant changes to the color palette and the kind of aesthetic design of the clubhouse here and trying to maintain a more sleek and clean look that's a bit more pleasing. Attached to the clubhouse is a in-ground pool with an adjacent pool deck for resident use during summer months. Additionally, there's a 24-hour fitness center, which also flanks the pool deck with this overhead garage area that can be opened up during warm weather months for this sort of open concept fitness experience where people might take yoga blocks out on the pool deck, et cetera. And then a couple of, to add on to those recreational amenities, we are also providing a pet park and a perimeter path around the pond. And here are just a couple of concept images for what we expect those to look like. And then keeping going with the architecture. Similar to the clubhouse, as you see up top here, was the original elevations we proposed at the concept hearing. And on the bottom here, the elevations we came up with, with close coordination with staff. As you can see, we've provided a much more warm and modern color palette, and we've also added a composite stone material in certain areas to try to stick to more of the typical design you'll see within McHenry. And the other variance, we are, one of the other variances we are requesting is a departure from the minimum unit size. As you can see here, we're requesting the, the request that we're making impacts only efficiency in one-bedroom units. We're making this request mostly based upon the idea that most of the minimum unit sizing ordinances in the Illinois area were written, you know, greater than 30 years ago, and as of late, modern, open-concept style design allows designers to remove some of the inefficient hallway space that would be artificially inflating the square footages of the units without providing a real benefit. As you can see here, these open concept floor plans are still allowing for ample light to enter into the space along with proper ventilation and just a quality area for living. And in full transparency, we wanted to make sure that we were covering some of the items on the development. some of the items on the development agreement, first being the impact fee reduction that Cody alluded to. The water and sewer capital development impact fee reduction we are requesting is simply a ratio of expected usage or usage projections based upon actual usage data from our existing communities versus the expected usage from a the impact fee study completed by the city. These calculations to come up with these proposed capital development fees were reviewed and confirmed by staff. Second, secondly, we're requesting a park impact fee reduction or a park improvement credit for the onsite recreational amenities per discussions with staff as well as the parks department. This would be an acceptable park improvement credit for the improvements we are proposing. Lastly, this is a new development within the last week as a part of this project. Through our engineering, we determined that we're going to have to complete a sanitary extension from our site through Blake Boulevard or Blake Road, depending on where you look, out to about a sanitary main that runs north, south here. After analyzing Blake Boulevard and this, the current condition of it, staff recommended that we take a look at resurfacing the entire street with the concern that if we were to go in and cut backfill and patch that, that it would not hold up well over time. We have agreed to complete those improvements as a part of our development. And they're to be completed prior to the final certificate of occupancy of our last residential building. So with that, just in summary, we're requesting that variance to allow both a preliminary and final approval approvals concurrently tonight of our plat and our rezoning, along with the conditional use permit related to that IDD district. This would include the variations to parking counts, unit size and signage, as well as the approval of the development agreement. And with that, I'll turn it back to staff or the mayor for any questions or further discussion.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that. Can you go ahead and take off your share if you don't mind so I can? There we go. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So we'll go ahead and have a public comment. This is the once and only time for public comment regarding items E one, E two, E three and E four. So this is a, your one and only opportunity. So we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and please try not to be repetitive. So we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. If you could please state your name and address for public record and unmute yourself at this time.
Can I speak? My name is Alan Mater and I live at 2115 Hazelwood. I'm going to just present a couple of the items I, I talked about at the May 19th planning and zoning meeting. At this time, the neighborhood encompassing Almond Lane and Hazelwood is stable. We do see houses for sale from time to time at a rate which appears to be normal. The influx of a 288 apartment complex is a consideration for the stability of the surrounding area. There are different points that need to be considered outside of the actual need for such a complex. And these include limitation of the size of the complex is 288 units in the best interest of the surrounding area. What could be accomplished by reducing the number of apartments? Well, first one I think is providing green space for those within the campus, especially children. And that might be accomplished by limiting the number of apartments that are being developed. I also have concern the effect this development will have on stormwater management for our neighborhood, which already is subject to, to flooding. Developers will always state what they need to make the development profitable and worthwhile. I think that this developer has already received consideration based on the sale amount of the property. If the rejection of the proposed plan is not something that the city council wishes to consider, then reducing the capacity in order to make the complex more agreeable in the best interest of the surrounding residents should be considered. And I, I'd just like to say, you know, the city council is, is in the driver's seat here. And I don't think there's anything wrong with, with you going back to Continental and saying, show us a plan of what a 200 complex, apartment complex would look like. What, what are the benefits for the complex inhabitants as well as those of a surrounding community members? What are the benefits that we could, we could see from this? Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
Yes.
Sam, go ahead.
Hi, I just want to say, and I'll be quick. First of all, is there anybody on this call? I see 45 people that, that doesn't own a car to get around McHenry. I think we need the, you know, we need that extra parking. What about when people come to visit? And I just want to make it clear also to everybody on the council that this is not the whole picture. This is only phase one. If this goes through, they got another lot that they're ready to put another 200 and some odd apartments on. You're not approving 288 units. You're approving five, 600 units. Just, just be aware, everybody, everybody knows that. And they say it's not low cost housing, but they reduce the hallways down to 485 square feet for the studio and one bedrooms. Well, the majority of this complex are studio and one bedrooms. I mean, just, you know, just take a look at it. If you wouldn't want this in your own backyard, then you shouldn't vote for it. And that's all I got to say. I really hope that everybody takes a look and sees that picture that they showed. And, you know, if you want to look out your back door and see that, I don't understand, but that's all I have to say. I'm, I'm begging you to turn this away. I don't want to have to move. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And next person I'd like to make a public comment.
I can go.
Hey Christine, go ahead.
Thanks. Christie Reinhard 3304 Almond. I am not going to be repetitive. I 100% agree with everything that was stated by Mr. Mater, Mr. Mater and Mr. Catalano. In addition to that, again, you know, one of the last things that was said, if you don't, if you wouldn't want this in your backyard, you shouldn't be voting for it. Lastly, you know, I hear still a lot from city council, I, 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 I'd really love to know what your constituents think. And if any of you have reached out to them, we do have to remember that we're the reason that you're here, the residents and the taxpayers. And I will close my comments with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone else for public comment? Last chance.
Me.
Oh, all right. Go ahead. Can you please state your name and address for public record, please?
Sure. Tracy Zago and 2221 Hazelwood Drive. May I proceed?
Yes, you can.
I was hoping to have Continental go back to their proposed setbacks. Are we allowed to have that placed back on the screen?
Go, Ben, can you go ahead and do that again? Get that up there? Setbacks.
Right there. That one. Thank you. My questions and concerns kind of relate to this. Not that I, I'm for the project, but in seeing this page where it has the six foot privacy fence noted, it looks like by the garage and then a mature tree and then the drop down to the ground level or elevation to where the home is. Can someone explain to me what the difference is in that height? Because it looks pretty significant.
Ben, you got that?
Yeah. So the, from basically this point to the slope here is about three to four feet. It varies across the property line towards the south. It's a little bit smaller than towards the north.
But how about all the way to where like the person is standing next to the home? What is the difference in elevation? Right?
I'd have to ask Matt to help me confirm all the way up to the home. I know down to here is probably about nine to 10 feet. Matt, can you help me out of there?
Yeah. From what I got in front of me and the survey information we have nearby from the parking lot, so pretty much right by where the car is shown on there to the home, we're looking anywhere from nine to 13 feet.
Okay. I don't, I don't see how that's acceptable, even with run water or rain runoff from the fence, just even to the home. I know you guys said you were going to put a swale in there. I, I'm assuming the swale is only just like a ground swell. Like it's, it's not made of concrete, like a actual curb or anything, is it?
No, it would be all, all just grass as shown in the renderings. It's kind of hard to tell here, but as you come down the hill, it actually dips down to capture that water and then it'll come back up towards the property line. We did keep the swale a bit off of the property line to preserve much of the mature trees that exist on the property line.
We've had a natural grassed ground swell behind us for years that has changed and evolved and eroded and I don't, I don't see how providing us homes where we are with the, you know, the same. I don't, I don't see that being a long lasting solution. And, and having eight or 10 feet above where your swale starts, that is a lot of water to be carried away by that swale. Even just the rain we just had right now today produced a lot of runoff and I, I think that needs to be reconsidered and reconstructed to if, I mean, if this is proposed to pass and, and you guys, you know, have our best interest in mind, I, I think that really needs to be redone. I, I, I don't, I don't see how it's going to be an effective solution. And, you know, you talk about trees maturing in five years and stuff. Water erodes grassy areas and we've experienced it already.
Matt, you can, if you want to take this, feel free, otherwise.
It can happen.
Hey, hey, Matt. Hey, Matt. Real quick. It's Ross with the city. Can you just explain a little bit? I don't, I can't point on this screen, but can you explain how all of the stormwater will be captured from the garages moving towards the west and, and brought to the detention facility? So the only thing that's going to hit that swale is what falls within that swale. So right now you're capturing everything from Aldi to the back of your residential home. It's all sheet draining onto your property. 95% of that's going to be captured and, and directed towards the detention facility. So the only water that's going to hit that swell behind your house is what actually falls in that swell from the sky.
But an eight to 10 foot wall is a lot of, but still. I understand it's not as much as what's currently happening, but it's still a lot. And I would just hope that the council would have our best interest in mind to make sure that whatever is proposed by Continental is beyond sufficient to carry everything that needs to be carried away so that it doesn't become an issue. And honestly, I, I, I feel like some concrete or, or something other than just grass i- is needed.
So actually concrete is actually worse for you because it will sheet drain where the, the grass is impervious or pervious. It'll capture that water. But just Tracy, one other thing I want to mention is we did require Continental to set up a special service area, which is a something that we can enact at a later time if for some reason the stormwater design does not function properly and Continental refuses to fix it. So we did that on behalf of the residents out there and their concerns with the, with the stormwater. But I will make sure, part of my job is making sure that the stormwater ordinance is followed. There, it's very specific, you know? We have our engineers, HR green chat is on this call as well tonight. You know, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that you, what happens on, you're actually going to benefit from this stormwater wise, honestly. So you know, we will make sure that it's not detrimental to your property.
I appreciate that. And the last thing, last comment I'd like to make is just hearing the, the proposed or the request for more green space and less parking. I, I just, as a mom, I think it's really sad that if more green spaces allowed, a park should be added. And I guess I'm gonna end with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and go to the next person that would like to make a public comment regarding six E one through four. Once again, this is the last opportunity. Okay. Moving forward, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve six E one ordinance approving variation zoning map amendment and conditional use permit for the authentic McHenry integrated design district development located east of the intersection of North Richmond Road and Blake Boulevard.
We could, I'll give you an option here, mayor, if you want, you can do all four so long as it's unif- unanimous. If it's a split vote of any sort, then it should be one, two, three, four.
Okay.
Now you predict that, but that's the way it should be handled.
Okay. Shouldn't be a split vote really. So, okay.
Let's see. There you got a couple of aldermen there.
Yep. Alderman Santi, go ahead.
Is it? We're going down this path of motion second prior to questions from, yeah, discussion from, from Alderman, from council members. Is that the way we want to proceed on this? I, I, I would prefer to do some Q and A prior to a motion.
You might be able to better figure out the position of everybody as well, mayor.
All right. Just one person though. So take it up with the rest of the council.
I second that, Vic.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and we'll allow discussion on each item individually or as a whole, David?
As a whole. I think they, they were both like that. It's, let's see what everybody has. Thoughts are.
All right. We'll do it as a whole. So.
Just city council though.
Yeah. Six E one through four. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion by city council. Alderman Santi, go ahead.
Yeah. Couple of things, you know, I know the second entryway emergency is not completely proposed and I understand that, I understand that. And I totally agree with that, that fire and police are, are the key issues here in regards to, you know, making sure they're comfortable with being able to access police ambulance and also larger fire vehicles. So, and nothing would continue with a project like this without that being, I mean, hard line agreement where and we don't have the fire department on, but you know, at least our, our police chiefs on, but that has to be, you know, completed, correct? That has to be approved by, you know, by those entities along with us. Correct? Yeah. So, so if, if they submit a plan, an engineering plan to us and it does not have a second access to the property, we don't approve it. They don't get a building, they don't get a building permit. They are required in the development agreement to have a second access that in the chief, chief Burke and the fire department will both have a review in that. Okay. Thank you. And a second access that police and fire along with staff reviews prior to anyone signing off on. Oh, absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Another question I have, and I don't know if we can, if anyone has this answer, but the stoplight at Blake and 31. It's probably a state. Uh, uh, it's probably a state answer or state has to follow up on this, but how does that light adjust? Um, will there be some adjustment? Will there be three more seconds on a left turn out of there? How, how, who takes care of that? How, how does that happen?
Ken?
Anybody?
Um, you know what, um, Chad, Chad, are you on the line? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Chad, can you, can you kind of uh, or did you get Vic's question?
Yeah, yeah, Vic, we uh, we, we took a look at a uh trans- uh transportation study that was submitted by V3. Um, which we reviewed and commented on and got responses to. And the timings and everything that get added to that signal, um, it, i- it really doesn't affect the signal as much as you would think. And the way the numbers go in there, we're moving basically the signal to its capacity on the short lanes that are out there now. So the length of storage and papers and stuff are adequate for the addition of this development. So there is room out there without greatly needing to adjust that signal. And that's, that's mainly due to the high traffic volumes that are on 31 versus yeah, versus the uh, um, the traffic that's on Blake Boulevard.
Okay, a- and Chad, just to please confirm this, um, if in fact there was some adjustments on that light, that's got to come from the city, uh, I mean, not the city, that's got to come from the state. I mean, what, what do you have as an engineering company? What do we have as a city in regards to, you know, potentially looking at that at some point in the future? Understanding that the surveys have been done, understanding that the engineering has been done today. Um, wha- what sort of recourse do we have there, you know, in regards to uh potentially uh, you know, lobbying to the state on, on something like this?
Uh, Troy, did you want to answer that?
Uh, yes, so every couple of years, and I don't know the specific frequency, but every couple of years, I dot will hire a consultant uh to perform a uh, like a re-optimization study and they, they actually provide the results to us. Uh, and a- 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 actually, they're pretty good about any time we've had any sort of a request for information about the timing, either from a real or a perceived irregularity, they provided the data and explanation about um how they've set them and why.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more thing I wanted to ask, and, and this is kind of thrown up to everybody, uh, um, Ben in his presentation showed uh the, the road improvements, uh, the potential of the second entryway. And um, one of the things, Ben, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I just want to make sure I understand this is that the actual completion of that road, final uh, you know, final blacktop topping everything, curb and everything. You made the statement that it would be, be completed upon completion of the project. Project as a whole, you know, in regards to we're dealing with an entryway and a secondary entryway where I, I, I don't know how to describe it, but it, it would be a roughed in road for a given period of time.
So uh, Blake Boulevard right now is being contemplated as a uh, just a two inch top layer removal and a two inch resurfacing to uh restore it to a, a proper condition. Um, it won't include, you know, substantial curb cuts or curb reconstruction except for those required for the development. Um, the secondary access uh will be constructed along with the development. Um, I don't know that we put a specific timeframe on that yet, but the Blake Boulevard improvements are tied specifically to the final CO of our last building. Um, however, in full transparency, we would, we would be benefited to complete that sooner as having a nice, clean, smooth road for potential residents is going to look, you know, better um in, in the long run.
Well, and, and just a quick follow up and then uh, you know, your stages of buildout, you're, you're going certain amount of buildings, this first stage, certain amount, stage two, I, I I, I don't know exactly how many, how, you know, how is that going to work? Because over time, you're going to start breaking ground and, and we're not going to have a, 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 a completed road until the final apartment building is constructed. That's the way I understand what's been presented.
Right, that's, that's what we're legally tied to. Um, typically our phasing goes, we'll, we'll build the clubhouse first and we'll start running a circuit kind of through the development. Um, turning a building every month or two months uh consecutively after the clubhouse. Um, so it's, we kind of walk through the, the development in terms of construction so that each of our trades can stay on site. And so they'll move like our, for instance, our foundation guy will move from one to two to three to four to five straight through a circle until they back their way out of the site. Um, that road construction, you know, like you, like you noted, right now it's tied to the final CO of whatever the final building will be. Um, I don't know if, offhand, you know, that's up to our GC to determine that phasing at a certain point. I'd imagine it'll be probably building uh five as noted on the civil drawings. Um, or maybe three. Um, but again, that, that emergency access right now isn't tied to a specific unit number, et cetera. Um, but we're gonna, it's all going to be done as a part of our initial grading and paving because it doesn't benefit us to wait on that construction of the emergency access.
Oh, I understood. If I could just jump in here real quick, Alderman Sandy, too. Sure. The, in, so the Blake Boulevard section that goes from the back of Aldi to Route 31, we required Continental. What we see happening, imagine thousands of uh concrete trucks and construction equipment and everything using Blake Boulevard during the, to say the two year buildout on this. That road is going to deteriorate a lot quicker. So we went to Continental, we said, hey, we want this uh ground and repaved. They agreed to it. We would benefit if it waited longer because that's less construction traffic as that development moves on, right? So, so we, we tied the last occupancy to that. I'm sure that they're going to be in there a little bit quicker because they're going to be putting the top coats on their roads and their parking lots and everything else before that last building is built, I would imagine. So, you know, we'll coordinate with Ben and his team, you know, on what's best and, and we won't let it go too soon or too late. Sure. No, I appreciate.
Oh, sorry, I was going to say unfortunately, um, our construction guy, our construction lead and our GC aren't on this call, but they'll be working closely with, with Ross in the, you know, if this is approved, they'll work very closely with Ross and I'm sure meet multiple times uh to discuss all the phasing of those improvements.
No, and just thinking of the flip side, I, I know that it, 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 it doesn't make sense to, to, to finish the road and have construction and concrete trucks going back and forth for another year and a half or so. I get it. Um, I'm just potentially trying to figure out is, if there's a way to, you know, where, where, where you see developments happen where uh new, new roads are built and they're, they're roughed, they're, you know, a couple inches below curb line, but they're, they're, you know, at least uh passable and uh uh are, are able to accept traffic as it grows into that area. Um, and that's all I have to say for right now, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ben, uh, how did you come up with the number of two eighty-eight? I know for negotiations you shoot high and try and come down, but where did you come up with two eighty-eight and what's the lowest number you can uh accept?
So two hundred eighty-eight, I mean, as you can see, we have all twenty-four unit building, twenty-four unit buildings. Um, our overall density at fourteen dwelling units an acre um is really close to in line with other developments in the area. So we did not feel that two eighty-eight was above and beyond what, you know, what you're currently seeing for apartment developers or developments in uh the city of McHenry. Um, I think the, the major difference between our development and those is just this, you know, large detention basin that we're placing up here to try to capture all the stormwater in this site as well as these large buffers along the edges that were, you know, this is a challenging site in terms of topography. So I, I believe that in terms of density, it maybe appears to the eye uh a bit more clustered than others other developments in the area look.
So what, let me ask the question differently. What's the lowest number that you would accept right?
I mean, right now it's two eighty-eight, we're in a really tough time uh for, for construction and development. I mean, if we have to remove a building, we go, it, you know, we go back to square one.
Why? Why is that? Why would you have to go back to square one if we?
It would require us to re-engineer the entire site. You know, it'd be a complete, if we removed a building, we, we would be looking at a very different layout likely here.
But would, wouldn't you have more green space and, you know, wouldn't it look nicer if you removed the building?
I mean, potentially, yes, no, but uh again, this is the, the flexibility of the, the IDD is, is what we're going for here and in terms of trying to, you know, provide a layout that fit well within this site given all of the constraints that we were working with while still allowing a development of the size that our property management team is used to working with. Um, if we get too low in our, in our uh unit counts, um, it creates some inefficiencies in terms of the management as well. Um, it's just that two hundred, you know, two hundred eighty-eight to three hundred is really an ideal range for our uh, for our uh operations team and our developments.
I, I understand that, but it's very dense. So could you go with two hundred?
No, we couldn't make two hundred work here, not with the current state of lumber pricing and construction pricing.
Well, it seems like it'd be cheaper for you.
It would be cheaper, but it's the efficiencies of scale that you get from adding, you know, more buildings on uh in a consecutive development. If we were to reduce this to say, you know, five, six buildings, we don't get the, the efficiencies of buying in bulk with the lumber that we get for uh as many buildings as we're showing here. Um, it's, it's just an equation, you know?
Uh, I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm done for you.
All right, Ross. Can, can I just, uh, Mayor, can I just add something really quick? So, you know, staff did do a density analysis. Um, and it's noted in the Planning and Zoning Commission Staff Report, I'll just kind of share my screen here real quick. Um, where? All right, can you, can you see that? There should be a table.
Yeah, we see it.
Okay, so, yeah, we ended up analyzing, just looking at the overall density of other developments in the city of McHenry. This is kind of how they panned out, looked at, you know, also the adjacent density of the single family residential homes um of those developments as well. So here's the proposed development at about fourteen point four dwelling units per acre. Um, when comparing that to the other dwell, our other developments in the vicinity, the only one that um, you know, that's really lower is just Garden Quarter Apartments right there at fourteen units per acre. Um, so in terms of uh density, or it looks like our most dense is actually Fawn Ridge uh apartments at nineteen point three dwelling units per acre. Um, and then I'll add just as a note, Hillcrest Apartments, you know, they uh, they did receive like a, a variation back in a long time ago to actually do one point five um spaces per dwelling unit at Hillcrest, actually. They were required to kind of add like, um, you know, the, this just kind of this bank, parking bank where a piece of green space is kind of set aside for future development of parking lot in case there was ever a need. There's not been a need, um, you know, that, that also that kind of a one point five dwelling units an acre. I guess it's the most extreme in the city as well, uh, but in, as a comparable, it is very similar to some of our other developments.
Thank you, Cody. Any other questions by council? Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, what Garden Quarters, I can tell you right now as far as the amount of space that they had. Uh, as far as green space uh was because of the community center and the amount of space that they used over there, otherwise they would have been quite cramped. Uh, so I don't think Garden Quarters should be used any, at, at all as far as any kind of comparison others, the fact that uh it's hidden away and there have been problems in the past because it was hidden away. Uh, what about, where are we hooking up uh sewers and water from this facility or to uh this facility?
The sanitary extension is running out to a, um, a main, uh, just barely to the east of Highway thirty-one. Um, water is connecting to both Blake Boulevard and Almond Lane to create a loop.
Who's building that?
We are.
And who's maintaining it?
The city will take ownership as most times with uh developments with multiple buildings like this, it's a requirement by the state that they are public utilities. So we would construct it, put it in an easement for the city, um, and you guys will own and maintain it.
Yeah. Uh, is that true, Troy? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, well, um, he, he is correct in that once they have multiple services on it, it's um considered a man.
So in other words, we, we are going to wind up uh taking responsibility for everything up to what point? Property line?
Well, there's that, there's going to have to be easements that circulate the property. Cause there are no publicly dedicated right away. So all of, all the public infrastructure in the development, which is the underground utilities, is going to be within dedicated easements.
That's going to be our, our responsibility.
Yes.
That's what you're saying, okay. So, I mean, we, we got burnt real badly uh years ago, a couple of years back, uh, uh, as far as when we had utilities, uh, city utilities and uh the townhouses out there off of Chesterfield and uh, you know, this is going to be the, the rest of the cities, uh, the rest of the residents of the city that are going to fan for that. Uh, now I have another question, uh, this one probably for Cody. Uh, procedure and review, uh, as far as combining, well, not combining, but uh as far as we are reviewing both a uh preliminary and a final plat tonight, is that right?
That's correct, so it's all rolled into one just because it is the subdivision, final subdivision plat.
And why did you feel that we could combine them?
Uh, it is a two lot subdivision.
Okay, is that the only criteria?
It's just, it's the only thing that requires, um, this did not meet the, the uh, I guess the preliminary and final simultaneous review requirement is because there's a public access easement or a access easement to lot two that's being put on there in the south uh for lot two to event once it develops. Other than that, if you would have just removed that easement, they wouldn't even, um, they could have just done it, you know, regardless.
Now, because you've still got utilities, the water.
So utility easements, not access easements though.
Sure, that's in number three and those are included. So therefore they don't meet the criteria to combine the two. So how do you figure that you can surpass the ordinance?
I don't know what else to say, Andy.
What is the reasoning behind it is, is what I'm trying to look at?
It's because there's only, it's only a two lot subdivision, so it's, it's a very simple process.
It's a simple process for you.
I think for everybody involved, I mean, what's, what, I don't understand what the, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say, Andy.
The normal procedure is a preliminary, okay? And in the preliminary, if it's approved, there's still time to take and look at all the details. And as long as they come back with a final that deals with all the, I mean, we're, we're asked to approve a final plat tonight without everything being done. There's still not a.
Eighty percent.
Uh, there, there's still not uh a final as far as where the second uh entrance way uh is going to be. It's going to be approximately, but it's not, not, not concrete. Does he have easements yet uh for that uh to come in off of lot two? Uh, where's it coming in from? Don't have that yet, do we?
Ross, go ahead.
Yeah, Andy, we will, we will not approve until that's presented to us and, and approved at a staff level. It's not like they're going to get a building permit. And one thing else I want to mention is I can't remember since my time being here one single time where we've approved a preliminary and then came back, everything. And Doug, you can probably back me on this. Every uh preliminary and final plat that I've ever seen go before council was done on one, on one council meeting. It's very common. In, in fact, our, our ordinance is, is archaic and we're probably going to be bringing it in to change that because it's, it's just not, it's, it's a timing issue, there's really no need for it. And the the approvals, as stated in the plan and zoning, the recommendations are put on staff for the emergency access. That's the fire chief and the and the police chief for approvals. So, I mean, I didn't, I don't believe that it, you know, it's something that council needs to approve. Obviously, if council feels differently, then, you know, we can go that route, but I I just, I don't think it's necessary.
Well, like I said, we have it, we have an ordinance in place. It hasn't been followed since day one.
And that's why we're gonna change it.
Well, I don't care if you want to change it. It hasn't been changed, okay? But we're taking it through a process that hasn't been done properly. And I think Attorney McArdle, if you look at twelve dash four dash three, which is a submission of preliminary and final plats, it specifically states the four criterias, and the third one is not met. I mean, it's plain plain as day, extension of public utilities. Yes, there is, extension of public utilities. We just had that discussion three, four minutes ago.
That's why we made them apply for a variation.
That's fine. However, when are you going for the variation?
Right now.
Okay, okay. So then we're sending them back to planning and zoning, correct?
I don't know. There hasn't been a vote yet.
Planning and zoning, well, i- if it if it gets approved tonight, okay, for variance, it still has to go back to planning and zoning, doesn't it?
Planning and zoning already approved it.
It's already done.
Planning and zoning reviewed both, they did a variance, they get a vote on a variance for the preliminary as well as reviewing both the preliminary and the final plats. They have no jurisdiction to overrule ordinances, but city staff took and 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 led them with your agenda that was sent that day to do that variance. They don't have jurisdiction. They don't have the authority to override an ordinance. Only the city council does.
Correct.
And we had that reviewed by our city attorney, so.
We have a lot of residents here here that have a lot of concerns about what's going on. Let's not just rush through the process. Let's make sure we go through every single detail to make sure everything's right. And I just don't think that we should be moving on until that's done properly.
David, need your help here.
Yeah, I need more detail then. I need to, can you put it up on the screen or something? Let's go through it. That's what the city council wants, is to look at the four elements.
I mean, David, you gotta look at, you're putting the the city into possible litigation if we don't follow.
We don't, we, I I just wanted it up on the screen, that's all.
We do.
I I need it up on the screen if I'm gonna look at it.
Okay.
Who's who's getting that up on the screen? Somebody?
I have no ability to do that.
Put the agenda up there.
Hold on, let me see if I can get it here.
And Joe, you're more up on this. If you have a position, speak up.
Well, the the fact of the matter is, is that you have a two-lot subdivision.
Stay on the elements, stay on the elements, Joe. Andy is on the elements.
We'll put him up on the, somebody just about had him on the screen. I almost saw him a second ago.
There you go.
You see him?
Yep.
So item number one, three or fewer lots were there. I have number two. We're not asking for new public rights away. We are repairing a public right away, but we're not asking for new ones. Item number three, extensions of public utilities. All the public utilities that ultimately will be part of the city are going to be in their own separate easements that we're constructing. And their public utilities, the only reason it has to be public is because of state statute. And because we're ultimately looping and helping the municipality, helping you as a town have a loop from the two subdivisions, so you don't have a dead end on the utilities. And again, the utilities themselves aren't in, they're really not part of the subdivision plat.
That's not the issue. The issue is, does it follow number three? Doesn't matter the plus or a minus for the city, does it follow number three? And it doesn't.
I mean, you're you you review all the public utility.
You know, let's 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 throw smoke over it. It's plain and evident right there in 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 writing exactly what we are supposed to follow, and you're not following it.
Well, and that's why, again, we asked for variance to allow it to be done.
I, that's fine. So people back to planning and zoning and start all over because
Start all over.
Wait a minute, Joe. It's simple and easy. When you went to planning and zoning, you combined them, okay? Without a variance on the ordinance, if you change, if you get a variance on the ordinance today, it starts today. It doesn't start back six, eight weeks ago.
We asked for them as recommending body to comment on that. They they recommended already. There there wouldn't be any reason to go back and ask them for a second recommendation of the same thing.
David, can you go ahead and chime in on this?
Yeah, so if we're on number three, if that's the issue, Cody, we are clearly, they're they, the developers clearly extending a public utility to the site, and they're creating new public facilities that are eventually going to be, you know, they're private, of course, still are turned over, but they're going to be new public facilities, right?
Correct. So that's why they requested a variation to allow for simultaneous review.
How how does the request, let's see the so they requested a why do they have to request simultaneous review when it's they're entitled to it under twelve, four, three, if they meet all four? Did they come in for the variation because they were not meeting all four?
This this is correct.
Okay, so Joe, in your petition that went to the the zoning, that petition requested a variation from twelve, four, three, because you're only meeting three of the four elements, yet you're still requiring requesting combined review and approval. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, that answers your question, Andy, in English. They're they requested a variation from twelve, four, three. The planning group recommended in favor of it, and that is before the city council tonight.
No, 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 it can't be sent forward as a submission of a simultaneous review until.
No, no, they just answered the question. He asked for a very, you can, you can keep fighting it. You asked me for my opinion, and I gave it to you. We are good. Based on what was just represented, we are totally good.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other council comments?
By the way, Mayor, I recommend you take these one at a time. It's pretty clear here.
Thank you. Okay, council comments? Alden McGlaib.
Yeah, if if we have a simultaneous review of a preliminary and a final plat, where's the preliminary plat?
Same as the final.
I'm not close enough to the plats here, Cody, but are they combined one into one plat or do you have two?
It's just a, it's just a final plat.
That's that's your answer. It's a combined plat.
Okay, so it doesn't say anything about combining it. It says a simultaneous.
I don't know. What's what's the title on the plat?
It's just the final plat of subdivision. I don't, I didn't see, I don't think anybody saw a need to include preliminary in the final plat of subdivision.
Right, but that would have been appropriate, too. You can call it whatever you want to call it. It's a combined plat. You can call it combined. You can call it a preliminary and final. I've seen those. You could call it a preliminary plan and final plan as opposed to plat. The name is irrelevant. The point is that it's a it's a combined proceeding.
It's not a combined.
I'll mute myself. I gave you the answer that the city.
That's fine.
All right. Alderman Devine, did you have something? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben, I have a question for you. How many children do you project on the property?
And I got this wrong last time, but I believe it's thirty-six. It was, I was trying to find the breakdown here before, but I lost it in my notes.
Oh, that's fine. That being said, I recently made a surprise visit to Kenosha. Tour to development, went inside a unit, all very nice, clean, well taken care of. One thing I did notice, and this property has been proposed as well, why not any kind of play area? A dog park, fine, but no play area. That's kind of, I don't know, I, if I was a parent, young parent with kids, maybe a play area, something. Yeah, that's what I have concern about that. Dog park is fine, but something for the the kids to do there, there. They don't have access to the park that's behind it in the neighborhood. That's just my thought. Thank you.
We, look, then you're a comment, you want to, you want to comment, Ben, or?
Yeah, I mean, was that a question or just a comment?
Um, that's a question.
Sure. So initial proposals that we brought forth included proposals to connect walking trails, et cetera, down to that park as well as dedicate park land for use to develop a park. It was just determined in this case that it wasn't the right way to move forward for both either ourselves or the city. Just due to the current status of the Parks Department, et cetera. We always provide the pet park just because more residents in our developments have dogs and pets than they do kids. And so it's really just trying to tailor our product offering to our demographic. You know, typically, you don't see more than eight or nine percent of our entire population being children from grades, you know, K five through eighteen. But sometimes as much as fifty percent of our residents will have dogs.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Miller, go ahead.
Thank you. So so Ben, I want to, first of all, thank you for all your information and your hard work preparing as much as you've done for us. I really do appreciate it. I did have the opportunity to drive your other direction and visited your properties in South Elgin, North Aurora, and Oswego, which are your properties called The Springs, which I know is a different property than Authentix. And in speaking with Cody to define the difference, well, obviously Cody informed me that it's not gated, et cetera, but could you just give me an overall? What, I mean, it appeared when I drove there that the exteriors looked the same, other than the integrated garages, that the exteriors that I was looking at and what I had in my plan were were pretty similar. Are, the buildings that I was looking at in those developments, is that essentially what you're building here?
There's a, there's slight design tweaks, and it's really more of the the branding. I mean, the operation and the quality of the community is going to be very similar. We're gonna have the same operations team, et cetera. But it is some of those branding elements that we have with the Springs that don't apply to our Authentix brand, such as that gated fence community. Some of those, you know, we provide a slightly larger clubhouse and pool deck there, and it's just a, you know, it's trying to provide a product type that fits in better with some of the further suburbs that, you know, maybe don't draw as high of income ranges, et cetera, that our our Springs developments would.
Sure, sure. But as far as the building look and the and the nature of the developments, I I, when I had my paper in front of me and I'm looking at those developments, they looked identical to what you're proposing.
Yeah, so. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the siding materials are a little bit different. The architecture is a little bit different. It's all in an attempt to, you know, make the buildings a bit more efficient, a bit more economical, just to support the rent ranges that we are targeting here.
Perfect. I I will tell you that I I did speak to residents in all those communities that I visited. As inappropriate that as that might have been, I asked them, you know, the 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 questions, do you like living here? Do you, do they take care of it? And and you had a pretty good review, which, you know, kudos to you because sometimes that doesn't happen in a rental situation. So I was very pleased. Landscaping wise, again, everything seems maintained and well cared for. I I was really reacting to the residents and some of the comments about the communities aren't aren't maintained, and I wanted to go see for myself, how does Continental take care of their properties? So that that really was my question. If those were the four communities that were closest to me, I wanted to make sure that I saw them. And, you know, and Spotsaw them didn't give you an opportunity to take me on a tour and tell everybody who was coming. So I drove there and snuck in, and I'm sorry if I was illegal, but that's what I do. So that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any other council members have any questions, comments? Alderman, glad we'll get back to you. Let's let the other council members speak.
For all the, all the woman and Miller on one of her comments.
Any other council members have any questions or comments? Alderman, go ahead.
Yeah, you you mentioned that you looked at those facilities in South Elgin and North Aurora and all that. Did you happen to look at the Crystal Lake construction, the one that's under construction right now?
I did. I actually, I went down Friday afternoon, and I pulled on the site. The only workers that were down there looked like to be moving dirt. There were some skid steers down there. There weren't any construction people down there, and I couldn't get beyond the dumpster that was on the roadway because they were moving pallets of something. So I did stop there, you know, the the Crystal Lake construction behind the Walmart there. So I was there. What's your question, Andy?
So you did see the the balconies and everything else there. I mean, it's it's a much more upscale scaled features than what were being proposed here, so.
Yeah, and that was my question to Cody. I called Cody from the car, and I said, okay, all five of these are titled Springs, and we're getting an Authentix product. Quickly describe to me the difference, and and Cody did explain to me that the Authentix is a a more modern, you know, different branding with a different look, whereas the Springs is a different product line. And again, immediately, just as you said, it had balconies, it had a gated community. It was a different, you know, from the first site. You know, we completely identified that, and I didn't want to have a different expectation. I called Cody and said, are we getting a gated community? I saw that on none of those prints. And we had that conversation. So yes, I knew right away we weren't getting those things.
Right, okay. Thank you. I guess another question I had was is on the the impact fees. Have we asked, this is Ben, have we asked schools for, I know, I think the mayor or somebody had mentioned that back at a different meeting, that we were gonna send them to the school staff for, or maybe I saw it online. I don't know. Because all I see is reductions for city city services as far as reductions at impact fees, the parks and the public works. But you didn't ask the schools or the schools refused you?
There was some, I believe there was some communication between staff and the schools, and the feedback we got was not, you know, it wasn't confidence building in that we could go before them and and, you know, have them support the reductions we were looking for. We also weren't able to draw a, you know, a really rational basis as to why that reduction should occur as strong as the other reductions that we were requesting, you know, we only request the reductions that we feel are, you know, righteous or needed, and, you know, we're not going to request above and beyond what is reasonable for a developer.
So in other words, hit the city and not the schools, because the schools would would definitely say no, correct?
No, I mean, it was just that we did not feel like we had the data to back up a request, and that we would just be, you know, walking up to them with our handout, and that's never a good position for anyone to be in.
Thank you.
You understand, Ben, that the impact fee is within the city's power.
Right, yep. We had, we had discussions with staff that they would only support a reduction to the school fees if the schools districts were to also support that reduction.
Got it.
All right. Alden McGlaib, go ahead.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you again for your time, um, I, I did a brief visit in South Elgin and, uh, uh, found a development, um. From what I saw, I, I did not drive through just by, on a couple occasions, I, uh, I'm in that general area from time to time. Um, they were, um, what I saw was, was nicely maintained and, uh, um, uh, seemed to have good aesthetic value to it. Uh, that's the only one I, I had, uh, I, I had been at and that's the Springs in South Elgin. I just want to get back to one question I had. The build out itself. Ben, what's, what's a total timeframe you're looking at, understanding that it's a seasonal issue, you got, you know, different, uh, uh, winter, spring, fall, whatever? Um, is this a, something like an eighteen months to a twenty-four month build out?
Yeah, that's probably pretty close in the, in the ballpark, I mean, the clubhouse is going to be somewhere between twenty, ten and twelve months from ground break. Um, and then each building turns, you know, again, taking into account, you know, if we have a rough winter and might impact things, et cetera. Um, but it's about one to two months for each building thereafter.
And then here, real quickly, where would you, is, this is a builder question, where, where do you start, what section here do you start? You started the clubhouse, do you follow those buildings on that, on the south end?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't drawn up the detailed, uh, I guess, construction, we call it the construction phasing plan or the turn plan. Um, typically that happens a little bit later as we go through permitting and et cetera, or those processes. Um, but I, I would imagine we'd start at the clubhouse, work our way to building one and two, um, potentially, uh, wrap around, um. Either to, I think that's building six or nine and kind of work our way up in a circle, finally returning back through, uh, past building three B to the entrance. Um, with one, I guess, sort of asterisk that the trash enclosure mail kiosk in the grounds building shown between building three B and four A. Would be, uh, turned with the first building because those things need to be serviced, uh, in, in, need to be up and running for the residents of building one A as they start to lease out.
And I'm sorry, those two buildings, you know, were three A?
Uh, yeah, three B and four A, so the furthest west building and the one directly across from it.
Okay, I, I see, I see, okay, all right, um, I have no further questions, thank you.
All right. Alderman Glenn.
Yeah, for Ben again, I guess, uh, we talked about the reduction of sizes of, uh, the apartments. Uh, and I know you had mentioned the fact that, uh, oh, if we had, uh, fewer, you had mentioned to, uh, I think it was Alderman McClatchy's question about, uh, fewer, uh, units would wind up, uh, having to redo the, the whole layouts and everything else. If we don't give you a reduction of sizes in the units, uh, would you not have to redesign these buildings?
Absolutely would.
And therefore you would have to redesign the entire layout.
Yep.
So in other words, you're gambling the fact that we will reduce the sizes, uh, so that, uh, you've already invested into reducing, uh, for.
Yes, sir, it's the same calculated risk as, you know, the proposal of two hundred eighty-eight homes, um. You know, we can have all the conversations and try to get all of the comfort from staff and, uh, you know, planning and zoning that we want, but ultimately, you guys have the final say.
Correct, I mean, if, if we don't allow the reduction in sizes and we require more open space, uh, probably looking at a much smaller, uh, development than, uh, what you've got there at two eighty-eight, now you'd probably be looking at closer to two hundred.
Yeah, I mean, it, it'd have to go back to our team to reassess it, but it's really, um, we're so far along in this project. And we've done so much work that if we start talking about, you know, either reducing unit counts or adding land, it becomes a, a very difficult hurdle to overcome.
So what you're saying is you came here with the intention that we're not going to change anything, we're just going to the way it is.
Yep, and that is why we're requesting the prelim and final concurrently. Because of all the work we've done and the detail we've put into the planning and, and design of these.
Other detail like the, uh, the traffic plan that was one day, uh, you know, in the middle of a week, uh. Nobody even, uh, mentioned to the county as far as, uh, uh, FAP four twenty and, uh, and also the, uh, the studies that they're going to be doing, uh, soon as far as the, uh, expansions of Route thirty-one now, always got for growth. All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward with, uh, a motion for E one is, uh, as it reads here, is ordinance approving variation zoning map amendment and conditional use permit for the Authentic McHenry Integrated Design District Development located east of the intersection of North Richmond Road and Blake Boulevard. Again, that's E one, looking for a motion in a second to approve, Alderman Strack.
I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you, second. Alderman Harding.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
No.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council, next item is E two, ordinance approving a preliminary and final plat of subdivision of Authentic at McHenry. Looking for a motion in a second to approve. Alderman Miller.
I'll make that motion to approve a preliminary and final plat of subdivision of Authentic at McHenry.
Thank you, second. Alderman Strack.
I'll make that second.
Thank you, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Oh.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council, uh, item six E three is ordinance proposing the establishment of a backup special service area number twelve in the, uh, city of McHenry, McHenry County, Illinois, and the, to levy taxes for the purpose of paying the cost of providing special services in and for such area if the property owners fail to provide said services. Looking for a motion in a second to approve, Alderman Santee for a motion.
No, for the specials, uh, yes, for the special backup service plan, uh, I will, uh, make that motion as presented on E three.
Thank you, can I have a second, Alderman Devine?
I will second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, council, next item on the agenda, E Z four, ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a development agreement with the Continental properties, looking for a motion in a second to approve. Alderman Miller.
I'll make that motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to execute a development agreement with Continental properties.
Thank you, second by Alderman Strack.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
No.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council, uh, all items six E one through four is passed. Before we move forward, I just want to thank all the residents behind this development. I, I want you to know that we will work with you as staff and as elected officials to make sure that you're satisfied with all the improvements that are going to be done. Um, I'm hoping that we can all work together and not, uh, divide what we're doing, trying to do in the city and trying to grow. Um, but I'm hoping that we can work together and I, I will tell you, I've visited the locations. It's all about who's on staff too with Continental, um, everyone that we've met or I've met has been phenomenal, it's about having that relation with the city of McHenry, with the school district, with the fire department and police department, so. I just hope that we can all work together moving forward and, uh, continue to grow the city of McHenry, so thank you all very much and Ben and your team, thank you very much for, um, putting this all together and, and I appreciate you investing in the city of McHenry.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Right? Thank you, Joe, it's always great to have you on here. Um, next item on the agenda is discussion item, uh, which we do not have, staff reports. Um, we are going to be starting in-person meeting, uh, so forget all the Zoom stuff, uh, so we are in person in the next meeting, which is June first. June twenty-first. Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Yeah, just, we'll still have the Zoom option for.
No.
Citizens, no, not, not at all?
No, no, we'll be having it, um, recorded and we'll put it on YouTube like before.
Will there be an audio version running live?
No.
No.
Okay.
All right, Alderman Miller, go ahead.
So I guess, can, can I just ask why we're not going to do a hybrid model?
Technology.
We, we just upgraded the camera in here, um, to where we can get the entire council, when you guys come in here, you'll see the new layout, but, um, we just had all, uh, everything re-done in, in the council chambers and, uh, I mean, it's loaded within five to ten minutes, right, Bill, I think you're, I don't know who's taking that over when we come back, it's been so long since we've been in person, but, um, I think we've, we, or Monty, I think it's actually Monty that loads it now, so, uh, Monty, it's pretty quick, uh, turnaround, right?
I don't know that because I never loaded off of your new camera before, I've only loaded Zoom meetings before.
Okay, so I guess it'll be a learning curve.
I'll do my best to get it as, as soon as possible, though.
You just.
Would you like us to look into it?
I, I would, I think what we've experienced in the last year and a half is that we have had more residents, including my cat who's going to walk by, um, participate in the Zoom meetings because it's been convenient and I, I know that it would be a kind of interesting if we had hybrid and Monty would have to monitor the Zoom for interaction or questions. But I think all my other worlds are continuing to go hybrid just because people have become very comfortable with joining meetings from their, from their couch or their dining room table. And I think it's something we should look into, I would love to fill our new room with residents. But if we have a way to accommodate them through a hybrid offering, maybe nobody shows up. But I think it's prudent as a public entity if we could offer it. Or at least look into it.
A cou- a couple of things, Sue, and thanks for everybody's input on this, um, because we did not think about the hybrid version of it because of the logistics of it. But, but we can certainly look into it, I, I can't promise you that in two weeks, we're going to be able to provide a hybrid version of it. But we can at least have the answers for whether or not it's a possibility for us or not within two weeks. Um, part of it has to do with like, two things, I'm not sure, and I don't know that anybody on this call, even David is sure, that a hybrid option is going to be something that's always going to be available to us. Uh, as a city, you would think after all of this that it would be, but I can't tell you that it will be or not, it's only an option right now. Uh, secondly, we have to, we, we have to think through the logistics of it because while it may be possible with the new monitors that we have for city council to see people on Zoom. Um, those, that viewing would go away with any presentations or anything else that we have. And then on the other side, whether or not people on the Zoom end would be able to see the city council, we have to see if, with the, we have the recording camera technology in here. But whether or not we have the ability to make that, the cameras live for a hybrid Zoom meeting, I don't know. So there's some logistics that we need to look into, so that's why I'm, I don't want to give you an answer yes or no, only that we will spend the next couple of weeks looking into what the possibilities are to be able to provide a hybrid option and be able to report that back to council on whether or not we can, what it would take, cost-wise, logistically, et cetera, with the potential of making that happen.
So let me chime in here, just as a reminder, Derek, to talk to me before you do that because there's legal issues about the city council themselves staying at home, we can do that right now under COVID and the governor's declaration and all that. But, um, or the president's declaration, but, um, that was all done through the OMA, we have to watch those rules.
So what you're getting at is whether or not at some point council will all have to be live.
Right, right, if people, right, at this stage, it's still good to Zoom from the city council level. So let's keep track of that for a little bit.
We'll, we'll jump, the commitment is we'll jump on that, we'll get as much information as we can back to council as soon as possible. We'll shoot to be able to do it before the two weeks are up so that we can get you some information and go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. All right, we'll go ahead and go to city's council comments, so go ahead, Alderman Santee.
Yeah, just follow up with Sue, I, I don't want to speak for Alderman Miller, but, and, and, uh, city administrator Morefield, I, I'm not in a, in a rush that this is a must, but look into it, I mean, if it's something that we can develop over the next few weeks, next couple of months or something, uh, fantastic. But at, at that point is, it maybe if we have to, you know, uh, draw a line through it, I, I get it and, but I, I don't foresee the need to just have to have this immediately or, or, you know, back up and running within the next meeting or two. I, I don't mind you spending some time and kind of reviewing it, maybe, maybe even testing it and, you know, to see if it's, if it's a possibility, thank you.
Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I like the idea that too, as far as, uh, having both, uh, shame on us because all of us, because we've never really thought about this, uh, we knew eventually we would, we'd be going back to live and, uh, you know. Unfortunately, uh, none of us even thought about keeping them both. Uh, with that though, uh, Chief, you're still on the line? I believe, uh.
Yeah, I'm here.
Would you mind if I just give you a fast call after the meeting, uh, take two minutes?
Sure.
Thanks. I always appreciate, uh, your openness, uh, not that I call you at midnight or two o'clock in the morning, but your availability at times, thank you.
All right, any other council comments, Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, uh, thank you, I, uh, would totally agree with that, if we could hybrid this thing, I think it's, it's, it changed our world, Zoom, you know, COVID recession just changed everything and if we can continue, this would be great. And, you know, for the time being, if we just do audio, that's, that's fine, but I, I'm sure we can patch the cameras in to make this work somehow, that's it.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? All right, looking for a motion in a second to adjourn. Alderman Strack?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second, Alderman McClatchy?
Second.
Thank you, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Good night.
Take care.